Six o'clock. There we go, Sue. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council Work Session for January 4th, 2021. A roll call, please, Sue.
Uh, Counselor McBride.
Yeah.
Counselor Cofield.
Here.
Oh, there he is. Counselor Yornell Holloman. Um, Counselor Martinez Blancarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present with the exception of Elise. Um, I'll update the minutes if she comes in late.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, review of the council agenda and meeting, anything for later this evening, folks? Any items? No?
I do. I do have one thing, and it's just a bringing up an idea thing, so it doesn't necessarily need a lot of conversation, but I just forgot to tell you about it today, so.
Okay.
And we could even do it during this session.
Okay, all right. Well, fire away. If you want to fire away now, that sounds good. We've got
Okay.
You're gonna have some time this evening.
Okay, so basically, and I didn't even think about this until a little bit later, but um, I know because we have a new counselor coming on, and I know it's probably on the agenda coming up, but um, committee and board appointments. I was thinking maybe it would be a good idea to have a work session where we kind of go through what all of them are and what they do, just kind of like a refresher course on what committees we have and who's been on them and what they do. Um, and I, and I failed to look at the agendas to see if that's already on something, but my thought was maybe have like a deeper conversation than just like shuffling them around if that's what we're gonna do or assigning, just because it might be helpful to, like even for me, a refresher and a reminder of what committees there are and what they do. And then, you know, have that conversation about matching people with what they like to do and, you know, those kinds of things. So that was just, it was just a thought for possibly a work session.
Yeah, that's great. Um, and once we see Sue back in the picture, we'll see if she's got it planned out. There she is.
Yeah.
Um, any thoughts on committee assignments, Sue? Was that on the, on the docket anywhere?
So I brought an analysis to you, which was quite large. I know, it was like a large New Year's Eve meal. Um, and the youth, um, Casper, Asher, and Colin, and you, and the mayor and I are meeting next week to talk about, um, I think we had seven challenges and 10 ideas. Um, so, um, part of what I included in that analysis was, um, a board and committee guide. And I haven't scheduled that out because we were gonna bring it back for how you guys kind of wanted to break that up into bite-sized pieces. I'm sorry, it's a food thing tonight. Um, so, um, we can certainly go over that. So appointments are made, um, as far as the process goes, set out in council rules, which is adopted by the resolution, and of course, the council can initiate an amendment to, um, Bryce is telling you don't apologize for food. Um, to, uh, to the, the resolution that adopted the last set and change that. Um, but when I did some research for Dan, uh, boy, heck, we had a lot of committees over the years. And yeah, some of them, the, the function may have made sense once upon a time, but doesn't now. So, I mean, we can, we can take committees apart, put them back together, sort of like Legoland, although I've never been to Legoland, but I hear it's cool. Um, anytime you want. So February 1st, what we were gonna do, sorry, I was ditched, I wasn't making a gesture, uh, was bring back Colin and Asher and Casper, who are three current uh, students, and talk about just kind of the youth portion. And then get your feedback on what we had brought to you before about the seven issues and the 10 challenges, which were just my take, you know, just the like paper look at, okay, this is how things were structured and, you know, maybe. Um, part of the thing is you have committees that started from 1947. So libraries are oldest to last year. And they've just been sort of added over the years, you know, piecemeal, but not an overall approach. So.
Well, there's, I mean, there's the, the committees, and then there's also, I think what Stephanie is also mentioning is the ones where we're out in the community doing whatever it is we're doing, those kinds of committees as well.
Oh. Yes, council appointments.
Council assignments.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I just bring that forward. I update the list when Rick makes assignments and.
Yeah, but let's, if, if we have time, let's talk about it. I think that'd be great. I mean, I'm, I'm game for that. I don't know. Everybody else, thumbs up if we wanna think about that. Got a couple of thumbs up? Okay, all right. Thank you, Stephanie. You want to mention the other one you had, Stephanie, earlier today? The other thought of a work session was, uh, illegal. And oh, and actually, we've got a, before we do that, allow me to introduce James Walker. Here's James. I don't know that you all have met, but James Walker is a partner with Miller, Nash, Graham, and Dunn, and he's our main contact with the firm. So, James, good evening, and thank you. And actually, why don't we introduce ourselves just that, because I'm not sure, even, Mike, I'm not sure you know everyone around the table either, so why don't we do that? And Denise, you're up first, because you're on my screen to my right. So there you go. No? Denise? All right, let's go.
I thought you said Mike, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I said, no, we'll start with you, and then, yeah, there we go.
I thought you said Mike, sorry. Um, my name is Denise Bacon, and I represent District 3. And I'm being sworn in tonight for my fourth, uh, term.
Yep, 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 and congratulations. Uh, Stephanie?
I'm Stephanie Finley, and I am the counselor for District 6, and, uh, I'm just embarking on my third year on the council, so I have this year and next year to fulfill my term.
And, and however many terms after that.
Well, we'll see.
We'll see. All right, Jules?
Hi, Mike. Uh, this is Jules Martinez Blancarte. I'm the counselor for District 2, and I was appointed almost a year ago, so it's been a journey, so welcome to the team.
Yep. Uh, Elise?
Elise Yornell, and I'm going to be sworn in today too. I was appointed in September of 2018.
And that's Lincoln, you here in the background. All right, and Bryce?
Hello, Mike James. Nice to, well, met you, Mike. James, nice to meet you. Uh, Bryce Cofield, uh, representing District 4, was appointed in September. Um, lover of food and Los Angeles Lakers, not necessarily in that order.
Nice, nice. Had to get that in, didn't you? All right, and Mike?
Yeah, so I'm Mike McBride. I represent District 5, and I'm gonna be sworn in tonight.
Right, and this is your second tour of duty, isn't it, on the council?
Yeah, I was on one time for three, three years back in 2003 to 2006.
Right, right, well, thank you. Um, James, anything else you want to, the folks to know about you? Don't tell me you're a Lakers fan.
I, I am, uh, I am not a Lakers fan. Um, I, I guess the connection would be they, they've, uh, got LeBron James, and I'm from Cleveland, uh, Northeast. So.
Go Browns.
How about, how about those Browns?
My, my husband now is your best friend. He is living the dream, the dream.
It is, it's unreal. It's unreal, for sure. But I'm just delighted to, to be your city attorney. I'd share that on behalf of not only myself, but my partners, uh, Nash, Graham, and Dunn, looking forward to, to working um, with the council and Mayor Rogers and Dan, City Manager Dan Weinheimer and, and staff. It's, um, uh, looking forward to the work and, and ready to get started.
Awesome. Well, thank you, and welcome, and happy new year again to everybody. Happy new year. All right, uh, council business items, uh, committee reports, anyone, anything, any updates you'd like to provide on any of your stuff? I got, all right, well, here, um, one, the Newburgh Downtown Coalition, Molly Olson actually re-retired today. Um, and she is being replaced by Polly Peterson, who starts today, and, um, you know, Polly's been around the community for quite a number of years, taught at Fox, et cetera, so she should be a great addition to the Downtown Coalition and, um, uh, and if you happen to see Molly around, do thank her. She, she did yeoman's work to really to, to, you know, to make the Downtown Coalition, uh, vibrant, uh, and in some very challenging times. So, anyway. Um, the only other one I've got is, I know we've got the Equity Task Force meeting will be on the 7th, so hopefully we'll be working towards, um, some community conversations. Um, that seems to be the next step, if we can figure out how to do that in this lingering or continuing time of COVID. So, so there you go. Um, anything else on the council business? All right, um, I don't see Sue, but we've got here a reminder from Sue about other government ethics. There she is. You magically appeared. All right, you want to say anything about the SEI filings?
No, this is my, uh, annual, I start reminding you in January that you've got a report to file in March. So, um, that's just my first reminder. You'll also get it in the mail at your mailing address on file with my office.
Awesome. All right, thank you. All right, with that, I think we're on to presentations. And Denise and Elise, are you both doing this, or how are you guys doing this for the Community Wellness Collective?
Elise.
Elise, all right.
Okay, I'm gonna put a different hat on. Can you all hear me? Okay, and Sue, am I able to share my screen because I'm a tardy person and didn't send this in?
Yeah, hang on a sec.
So I apologize, Kristen is not able to join today. She has, um, a young professionals retreat, so I am going to be doing, um, the presentation for everyone today.
So you should be able to share now, Elise.
Okay, perfect. Okay, tell me if you can see it. Can you see it? Yay, okay. So, who are we? I thought I would just start out and just give you guys a little overview of what the wealth, Community Wellness Collective is, and there's a lot of pretty amazing agencies and community committees, um, in Newburgh and Yamal County that, um, all have pretty, um, similar mission and values, which we're really lucky to have. But the Community Wellness Collective started back in 2018, which is crazy to think about. It's been three years this January. Um, Kristen, um, I had recently moved to Newburgh and had been working, um, with the high school, um, through my, my job at Providence. That was the year before that we had, um, six completions, um, youth completions or recent graduates from Newburgh High School. And so, um, everyone on council is pretty familiar with my addiction and mental health background. And so, um, I'm pretty passionate about wanting to de-stigmatize mental health addiction and really present, um, a face of hope for people within the community, that there is life after addiction, and there is life after mental health, and that you can be an active community member, friend, parent, um, sister, wife, everything above. Um, and so Kristen had, um, heard about it through her involvement, obviously, in the community, and then her, her business with, with young, um, uh, men and women, um, that are, um, that are dancers in our community. And so she has firsthand experienced a lot of mental health concerns that are maybe not, um, publicly, um, accepted. So we, um, met and she approached me in a Young Girls Meeting, and I didn't know who she was, and she said, let's get together and talk about what we could do. So, um, and then over here, I didn't know Denise Bacon at the time, but she was working on nurturing Newburgh, and so, um, we've had really similar goals, and I feel really lucky that I and to, um, get to know Denise and her heart and her, um, extensive background, um, on, on, um, community wellness. So what we, um, from the gate decided we were going to have quarterly gatherings just to get a pulse of the community and, um, really transparently to try to make some noise around the community around mental health, because we just felt like at this point, it was unacceptable that we had had, that we had lost six lives, um, to suicide. And so, um, being new to the community, I quickly learned who the amazing people in the community are that are advocates for mental health and addiction, and we really quickly developed a governance board. Denise is on that governance board that, um, is about 25 people at this point, of people that are highly engaged, all agencies within the community. We have HHS, Lutheran, Family Board Foundation, Providence, um, Unitos, Virginia Garcia, just a cross-representation of people that are super engaged around wanting to, um, really tithes mental health in the community. And so we quickly, we quickly, um, decided that our mission was going to be to de-stigmatize mental health in the community and addiction, and to, um, elevate different existing resources within the community, because so often, um, and I am a huge vocal person around this in the medical community, we reinvent services, um, because we think we can do it better, rather than getting together and understanding where our differences are in our agencies, that we are creating the red tape for people to access those resources. Um, so we quickly, um, tried to put together a community resource guide. And so one of our first quarterly gatherings, we do quarterly gatherings, which are educational opportunities for people in the community to come forward, and really, in my opinion, be a check on, um, people like myself. So people that work at Providence to and vocalize what their frustrations or gaps in services are, um, speak up, um, on poor experiences they've had, and then for us as community agencies to really take that feedback to heart and work together to try to remove those barriers. And I can say, you know, as a person of Providence, um, and I think she'd be okay with me saying this, um, when I started at Providence, um, HHS and Providence maybe didn't have the best relationship. Um, and today, super, super proud of the relationship we have. Um, Lindsay Manfran is one of, um, one of my friends who I just greatly respect in the work that she's doing. Um, same with Lutheran, you know, Providence was not super visible in the community, and so we've tried really hard over the last three years to be a visible presence within the community and join forces with community agencies that, um, have historically done the work, Lutheran being one of those, um, strongholds in the community. So, um, we quickly developed a community, um, resource guide. It was a printed version. It was, you know, first, first pass at it, and quickly got a lot of feedback that, you know, we were missing different groups, and it's gonna become outdated so quickly. And my original intent was to make it, um, similar to the AA books. If you've seen them, they're like a pocket size. You can just put them in your pocket and put, put them in your purse. Um, they don't look super government agency type. Um, I wanted it to be something that was, um, an inclusive, um, view for people to feel like it's a welcoming, uh, tool. Um, so then we made a website. So, um, that brings us to 2020, where we had huge aspirations, like every organization, we're gonna conquer the world, right? Well, so March, we had a really successful gathering. It was the day before the shutdown. So, I'm so glad we got it in. It was our annual suicide awareness event, and we're, um, always gonna start the year off with the reminder of why we're here, and that is the prevention of suicide. And so we do an honoring of, um, students that, um, have lost their lives and then other community members that have been impacted. And so really, we had a really amazing event where, um, we had Newburgh Dundee Police, um, Cosmicke and, um, Cook were there, and, um, can't forget Moreland. They shared, and it was super heartfelt. Um, and I really appreciate all that they do, um, with us in the Community Wellness Collective. Moreland, he has been forced to be on the governance board, but he, I think now he like, he enjoys it. Um, so, um, we quickly decided that we needed to pivot. COVID happened, um, and I miss old businesses. So the first thing we did was a door drop, where we served, um, we were able to serve 300 at-risk youths. So we have a running list of, um, we consult on kids week, weekly, and that's the way that we haven't lost any kids since we started, um, is that we consult weekly on high-risk youth. And we, um, have a memorandum about understanding with the high school Lutheran, HHS, and Providence, so that we can, um, communicate freely, um, with kids with a release of information. So that has been a big barrier remover, um, for agencies to speak freely back and forth and coordinate care. So three of those youth, 300 of those youth received door drops, which, um, were not like your, um, school kits, it was, or hygiene bags, it was activity bags. So we purchased activity kits from local businesses. Um, we had art kits, we had, um, social goods toys, we had pull-up and circumstance. So it was a really nice way to drop some, drop some bucks in the pockets of local businesses, but then also support at-rescues. And we had, um, the youth's favorite, um, teacher or mentor deliver it. So it was a really nice, um, safe, um, personal contact. We then just distributed 9,000, um, of our printed guides throughout the community, through all different cities. Every city in the community, in our county, received a surplus of guides. Um, and then we, um, did Positive Charge PDX. Part, Positive Charge PDX is an organization that, um, collects different, um, resource items, and so we made two, two big trips of three trucks and, um, got to supply that at Youth Outreach, which was great. And, um, now I'll go into that. This is one of our most exciting changes of 2020, so there's always some silver lining in some of the chaos. We opened up a, um, and formalized a partnership with YCAP. So, um, the Community Wellness Collective now has a physical space at Youth Outreach. Um, we had opened the, um, Newburgh Wellness Center with really the plans for, um, this 2020 year to be really this huge, um, launch. We were seeing up to, um, 1,500 touches per month of students through the Wellness Center when COVID happened. And so we were really nervous that that was going to, um, be a huge, uh, deterrent in the kids' safety, because we had become a, a known space for kids to have a safe space at school. So we were really, um, thankful that Youth Outreach opened up their space. And so we currently have an office there for our two community outreach specialists, which are funded through the Austin Family Foundation and Providence. And then, um, our Providence Behavioral Health Part, um, providers, our HHS providers, and our Lutheran community service providers can, um, see kids in person. Um, we found that a lot of kids, unfortunately, their home is not their safe space. And so it's really important that they have a space that they can go for in-person care, and we, of course, are following, um, CDC guidelines for safety precautions during COVID. And then our DDI response, you know, we've, we've also in 2020 had, um, really political unrest throughout the nation. And so we took this really, really to heart as the Community Wellness Collective and did a review and determined that we needed to ha, we needed to spend whatever money it costs to translate our website and translate, um, our governance board and hire a consultant to do translation ad hoc whenever we needed it. And so we were able to translate the guide and get that out to Unitos and, um, some different, um, uh, companies in town that were requesting it. And we also have, um, a fully translated website now. Uh, so that's a great feature, and we got some really great feedback from, um, Unitos. Um, then, though, we had, we spent a lot of 2020 refreshing our website, and I quickly learned that this is a huge undertaking. I learned how to build algorithms, which never really wanted to do that, but, um, we changed our website to be, um, really what we had always envisioned it to be. So it's a resource-based, um, survey, it's a survey-based resource guide. So meaning, I had this idea that if, similar to how you're on eBay and you like, tell your, tell eBay what you're looking for, and you can have filters, it's similar to that. So if you play around on the website, you can actually do it, even though it says launching soon, you can click on it and try it. Um, it's a, it's a survey base, so it specializes to you and it captures your data. So it will know where you are in Newburgh and what around you is, is the best resource for you, based on how you answer. So if I say, I'm in need of housing, yes, I'm in recovery, no, I'm not sober, um, I'm willing to get sober, I'm willing to have medication-assisted treatment, it will give you the options for all of those things, um, in your location or the nearest location to you. The other really cool feature is you can, um, uh, it, you can ask, you can ask on an icon, "Contact me," and it sends an email to the, to the agency. And this has been a huge set, uh, huge, uh, point of tension with people like Providence, but we'll keep pushing them, is to, instead of having the patient need to initiate, you're a phone call and go through a lengthy referral process, having the agency contact the patient. So this is really a self-referral system and the way that I really want to see healthcare move. So it's a great little pilot to see how it works. And then our last, um, thing that is probably our most ambitious and something I'm a little nervous to talk about, but Kristen and I decided we'd put it on here just to keep ourselves accountable, because now it's in writing. Um, we are venturing to, um, formalize a partnership with the Newburgh Emergency Shelter. So, started by our very own Denise Bacon. Um, thank you to Denise, um, truly. Um, we, Sarah, um, Sarah Greider and Cara Johnson, now I forget her new married name, um, have been doing an incredible job over the last year to keep the Newburgh Emergency Shelter open as I am Lutheran, and then at differing locations, um, during COVID. And, um, an opportunity has presented itself where, um, we will be able to, um, have a space in Newburgh and have a 365-day low-barrier shelter. So this is still in the works and needs to be signed on the dotted line, um, but we have submitted for insurance and we are almost there. So really hopeful for this. Um, it's really one of my dreams to be able to, um, do this. Um, and I can't think of better people than Sarah and Cara to be the leaders of it. Um, so we're hopeful that we can deliver on that commitment to the community, as it will be the first low-barrier shelter in Yamal County. And that is a 12-bed, just so everyone knows. So our hopes and aspirations of 2021 continuation, even when we reopen the Wellness Center at Newburgh High School, we have every, and every intention of wanting to have a remain presence at Youth Outreach. Um, we have really enjoyed the partnership with Youth Outreach, and, um, their director has been really great to work with. Um, and then we, we plan to launch, um, our refreshed website at the end of our annual Suicide Awareness Event. So that will be an opportunity for community members to have a demo done during that. It'll be a virtual event, but community members can log on and we'll demo different scenarios, so people can see how to use the website resource tool. And then, um, formalizing our partnership to get the, um, the shelter up and running, I think is, you know, top priority of ours. And then just maintaining our quarterly gatherings on mental health topics. So we've had domestic violence, we've had addiction and overdose. We've had, we try to do topics that are not necessarily ones that people want to talk about, but something that's really important for us to engage in as a community. And I just rambled at you. So my question for you is, what can we do for you as a city council, and knowing what your, um, city, city, uh, goals are? I think that we're, uh, an organization that is very aligned with the goals of the current council, and, um, we really would like to be seen as an organization that can be used by the city, so, um, by every department, um, as a, as a tool for you. Um, I know that our police, we have had a lot of conversations with, um, Chief Cosmicke about how we can be a tool for the police department when they are, um, interacting with, um, different individuals in our community that could use resources. So we are exploring having an active option for the police to be able to access. Um, but I'm sure that there are other ways, um, at the library, um, at City Hall, uh, Public Works, whatever it may be. We really want to be an, an organization that you can see, um, can serve the needs of, of what your departments and city council, um, have as the goals. All I got.
All right, folks, uh, questions, comments?
Anybody else? Yes, I do. I have a couple of things. Um, I would love to see a collaboration with the library. Um, I know that Will and his staff are really dedicated to serving our community in, in really real ways. And so I would love to see that kind of collaboration, um, with the library to make sure that they have, um, everything they need to have in order to contact you guys and, and sort of help each other back and forth with services. So I would love to see that happen on sort of a really big level. Um, the other, I have a question about the, um, warming shelter, and I know this is sort of putting you on the spot as also a Providence person. Um, but is there any push to make sure that we are getting our clients, um, in the houseless population, um, vaccinated sooner rather than later, so that we can make sure that we're protecting our most vulnerable, um, in a time where, um, hopefully we will be able to get lots of people vaccinated. So I would love to see that happen.
You're speaking my language. Um, so, yes, that's on the list, and, um, we, I shouldn't, I don't know what I'm allowed to say these days, but. but we were able to vaccinate nearly a hundred EMS workers this weekend. Kind of hail Mary just did it at Providence and we did Lafayette. With Carlton, Sheridan, we did across the county, we opened up an invitation and sent it out. So I do think that the next population, don't tell, is going to be high-risk patients. So that houseless individuals would fall into that. So definitely on my radar and I absolutely agree.
Other comments or questions? I'm looking for blue hands, if you've got blue hands.
Give me a hard one.
Jules.
Well, first of all, Elise, thank you and thank you for Kristen and everyone who's doing this amazing work. I think one suggestion would be to maybe, and maybe there's something we could talk with the, with Rosa Babista from the Welcome Center with the Newburgh School District to really try to bring some of these resources or have some of these conversations with the Latinx parent group. That's a space that they find very safe. And if we want to slowly start to build that trust with them, I think that would be a really good space, since especially talking about mental health is not something that's always, that our community's not always been open to. But I think there's a lot more openness and willingness to have these conversations. So that's an idea. And you know, if you, if any, any way, shape or form I'm helpful, I'd be more than welcome to do so.
That's, I love that suggestion. I'm gonna do that right after this meeting. Leo has been really great to work with too. Leo's on our governance board. So I'll, I'll reach out to him to make that connection with the, with the parent group, because we haven't done that at all. So that's a great idea.
There are comments or suggestions, folks? Mike?
Yeah, so the Harvest House, is that strictly for, let's say battered women and their, and their kids? Or is it also a place where, let's say runaway youth or something would have a place to go and stay also? Does it cover both?
That's a great, great question. So the Harvest House right now has been for families. So the tran, it will be transitioning into a low barrier shelter, which really actually means anyone. We will have policies that guests will need to sign a waiver when they enter, meaning that they're adhering to our policies. But it is a no turn away shelter. As for domestic violence and victims of domestic violence, families of domestic violence, there are other resources in our county. They absolutely could stay in the, in the Harvest House, but there are other resources like Henderson House and different, different options we have that we could connect them with. And then for runaway youth, Youth Outreach, this is something that I'm hoping that YCAP will share at an upcoming meeting. They have a really special program for runaway youth to be emergency foster families. And we do have, we do have families in our community that readily open their homes for these youth. I think it's a program that is really under-publicized and something that we really need to get in the hands of our community, because I, I, when I speak to people that are in these situations, they really, most of the time have not heard of it.
Elise, so good. You know, I love asking hard questions if I can and wanted one. And I mean, you all doing great work. I appreciate the work, working closely with community, particularly the asset-based perspective that you're taking as opposed to a lot of more deficit approaches that you tend to see. I think that's good. Literally, there are only two things that come to mind. One is, you know, given the, for lack of a better term, the highly-churched nature of Newburgh, I'm wondering to what degree red churches are, are being involved in this. I mean, I, I feel like that would be a really good organic way to get the word out for folks that are always necessarily searching online or whatnot. So would be my first question, I have like one other really small thing.
All right, okay, yeah. And you know, full transparency, you know that I sometimes show up at church and sometimes don't. I'm not the best with church community.
That is all good.
I work at Providence. And so I, we attend the Providence Faith Group. So that's a monthly meeting. It hasn't met as often with COVID, but Kristen has actually taken point on that. And so we do interface monthly with, with a significant amount of pastors. I also presented at the ministerial committee. Come on, help me out, someone.
Ministerial Association.
Yeah, so we definitely have, I mean, that's, that's a group. I mean, the reality is that we're a very churched community. So it's like imperative that we have that as a part of our, our outreach. So yes, and our, and you know, I've been really impressed by the pastors in Newburgh. They have really, really understood the importance of this conversation and have really tried to incorporate it into their congregation. So I have nothing but admiration for people in the church community right now.
Yeah, no, that's great. And I just know, you know, number of folks who were maybe initially looking for resources can tend to think. Exactly, we're pastors, so that's huge. Literally, the only other thing is I was clicking through the website, which is dope, by the way, props to whoever made it.
Not completely done.
It's okay. The only thought is, so at one point you can do demo questions. And when it comes to racial ethnic identities, you can only click one. So allowing folks to, to select more than one could be good for some of us.
I, I actually, I actually know how to fix that.
There you go. Yeah, mark all that apply, but great job.
Thanks.
All right, anyone else, anything else? Yeah, I do, great job, Elise. It, this is, it's fantastic, much needed in Newburgh. And you know, not to be too melodramatic, but you're saving lives, my friend. And that's, that's pretty dang important. So the only, my only, my only comment is, is that, you know, I, over the years, I guess with coaching, you know, I'll get a call from a kid at, you know, some hour at, no, go ahead, go ahead. Fire away.
I cannot believe I forgot this. So this was my shout out to you. We started this last year, Tiger Talks. Have you heard of this? So Tiger Talks is where we have athletic behavioral health lessons by one of our behavioral health providers for different athletic teams. And they go through a series on mental health. And then our, our behavioral health providers have loved doing that. So I know it can get better, but it's, it's a start.
And I think, you know, I think that, and again, for, you know, particularly coaches in the building, that, that's, that gets them. But the coaches that are out of the building particularly, you know, if there is a number to call, because again, you and I have talked about this before, that I see a kid, kid calls me at eleven at night and something obviously is going on, I don't know who to call except, you know, Chief Cosmicke. And that's all I know. So if, if there was, you know, another route that we all knew about, I think that would be, would be awesome. But again, I can't, can't give you enough props on this one. This is fantastic, really great, great work.
Thanks.
Any, anyone else, anything else? Yep, all right. All right, let's, uh, let's move on. Now let me ask you a question, actually. I see that Judge Blake is here. Good evening, good evening, Judge Blake, happy new year. What, since you are here, what would, would there be a problem swearing in our new, our renewing counselors now? Or do we need to wait for the business session?
I'm willing to do it now. I, I finished up my other business and I didn't want to delay you, so I'm ready when you are at, at your leisure.
Okay, and then what about those who are being sworn in would now work or would you rather wait till seven? Denise, Mike?
I don't care.
Elise?
I need to make sure my dad can join.
Oh, well, all right then. Call your dad, send your dad a text. No, all right, all right. Can, Judge, can you hold on for just a second? And then we'll, okay, thank you. How's about we move to the city managers' report and we'll queue up Dan?
Yeah, I think I can do this in under ten or fifteen minutes. Let's see. But yeah, I, January fourth, you know, we've had two sets of holidays in between our last meeting. So there's a few things to report, but not necessarily a huge amount. You know, with the holidays and a lot of people taking time off. Quickly, COVID, which, you know, is sort of the topic that we sort of have to always talk about, it seems like. And I'm gonna try and group this in a different way through 2021, mixing things up and think about COVID in terms of customer service and the, the city council goal there. We've completed CARES Act funding that we were allocated and getting that out to folks. We had a deadline of December thirtieth, so we were able to meet that. We have been working on remote work agreements and really part of a policy that was issued in early part of December, trying to focus on, you know, in both a relationship between the, the staff and, and supervisor and also just trying to get as many people out of the building as possible. And so in a lot of ways, really trying to emphasize the fact that there should be core hours that, you know, everyone's available, both from a public service standpoint, but also a responsiveness to their supervisor standpoint. And then also making sure that we're clear on what the work is that individuals are doing. And so working through the implementation of the policy, through remote work agreements and in the process of kind of signing off on a lot of those things. And as our first go-around, I think it's more or less like, yeah, that sounds good. And, and hoping that we have a chance to iterate as we go forward and, and improve on, on our first attempt. We're also in the beginning stages of working through what immunization may look like for our staff, trying to figure out, you know, who and how and what to do if there are folks who don't want to be immunized and how that will look. And so, you know, in the beginning conversational stages at this point, so not really a lot to share there, but trying to think ahead about what that'll look like. And, you know, really thinking that it'll be fall of 2021 before we're, we're back to normal, whatever that it will end up looking like. But, you know, again, trying to prepare ourselves for the opportunity for immunization. Non-COVID related things, we've got James here, which I, I put in the customer service category and trying to make sure that we've got, you know, the legal service that I think the council framed well in the sense of, you're really trying to look forward and think about our future needs as well as our immediate ones. And think about the breadth of having a, a service that includes multiple attorneys rather than just one. And so able to execute all the agreements between the twenty-first and now, and, and here he is. And so happy to have James on board and really excited to get to know him and to work with him. And, you know, I think to take advantage of the, the breadth of service that Miller Nash is, we think, we expect able to provide the city. And so we'll soon need to launch into things like labor negotiations and, you know, all kinds of other things. But at this point, I think we're just pointing the fire hose at someone besides me. You know, I'll take the relief for a few minutes and, and provide that, that drink to James. So also under customer service, you know, really looking at, at scheduling out the work sessions we talked about. So if there are additional topics, and I know Stephanie mentioned a couple at the beginning, if there are other topics that come up, you know, it's one of those things I'm, I'm all, open to, you know, putting them on a list and trying to get them scheduled. Certainly, I'm sure Mayor Rogers is as well. But, you know, just try to make sure that we're providing the, the, the opportunity for discussion around topics that are of interest to you all and to make sure that if nothing else, also trying to demystify the city to both counselors, but also to the public as well. And I think that's an opportunity we don't always take advantage of. So if there are things we can talk about, happy to schedule those work sessions. One other customer service related thing is the annual comprehensive annual financial report. The CAFR is complete and been posted on our website. It's about two hundred plus pages. So it's available online for those who are interested in consuming it at all or in that format. But for those who might want a paper copy, just let me know. You can email me offline and I'm happy to coordinate getting you a paper copy as well. One, what I would say is customer service related thing as well as, as we had talked about before December, actually, I believe, or maybe it was the early part of December, that Mad Zook has left Newburgh unfortunately as a finance director. It's a big hole for us to fill, but also unfortunately on the heels of that, found out that Caleb Lippard, who's been our assistant finance director, is also leaving. It's just kind of for us, for Newburgh, bad timing. You know, really, I think kind of one of those things where folks making the right decisions for their, their, their families and, you know, what are, I think, hard decisions for us and for the organization. But at this point, Caleb's last day is going to be the, the end of this week on Friday. And so we're in the process of looking for interim finance director or somebody who can kind of step in, who has some of that director level, sort of journey level experience and who can help plug some holes for us and make sure we have a budget, make sure we have some of the more high-level financial activities going on. I do, you know, it's unfortunate in the sense that, you know, I, I think we had big plans for biennial budget and for a program-based budget. And certainly those are going to go by the wayside for this year. Maybe gives us some time to plan those better, but I think we're gonna go back to the basics and just make sure that we get the things done that are necessary. And so, you know, want to definitely focus on the positive for Caleb and his family and just wish him well. He's gonna be, he's accepted a position closer to family with the city of Asheville, North Carolina. And as a person who has been to Asheville, it's a great community and, you know, just a great opportunity for him and his family. So wish him well. And it's obviously a big loss for Newburgh in a lot of ways. And so I just wanted to let you know about that, but also we're in the process. I think tomorrow we've got a couple of interviews scheduled and looking to, to see what we can do to plug that hole. At least thinking about a six-month timeframe to kind of plug the hole and give us some time to think about how best to provide internal kind of central services to the, to the organization and, and where that'll go long-term, you know? So there may be some changes to other departments and some restructuring that'll come from this, that things that I had been maybe in the back of the head, there may be a little blur of an opportunity at this moment that need to be taken up and, and run with. The one other item was a different council goal, which is DEI. And just a heads up that we're continuing to get information requests from the internal assessment that we had scheduled and paid for through the, the Ty Hardenmore, who's a local, who does some of this consultation work. And so we're in the process of fulfilling another information request from her and some ongoing conversations there. You know, things around policies, financial and other policies. And so, you know, gathering some of that information and trying to hand that off to her. So some progress, small, as it may be right now in terms of just gathering things for her to, to review and, and give us her opinion on, but gathering some items through DEI as well. That's it, that's kind of what I've got.
All right, questions or comments for Dan, everybody? Sir, Mike?
So Dan, are we still, is Newburgh still part of the Council of Governments? And if so, could they help us? Could they bring in somebody that has that experience that could fill that whole force? And or maybe even put the word out and, and be able to help us get somebody to fill that role? It sounds like we've got two roles to fill, the main financial director and the assistant.
Yeah, I think we are, to answer your question, we are still part of the COG, the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. We actually use them for legal services for a couple of months as, as a backup. And that was a pre-existing contract we had. I'm not sure what their capability is when it comes to finance. And I'd be happy to reach out to them and ask the question, you know, if they can provide, even if it's names. You know, we're kind of at that point where we're just curious. I think there are a small cadre of folks who do this for a living, essentially are, you know, high, for higher interims, is focused on finance. And so we've talked to a couple of them who just don't have the capacity right now to take on any work for us. But certainly there's a couple that we're gonna talk to that do. And so we'll see if there's more for sure. I mean, I'd like more options than less, and so I'd be happy to reach out to the COG for sure.
Are there comments or questions, folks? Well, we certainly wish Caleb and family all the best. Really do, gonna miss them, gonna miss them, gonna miss Matt as well. So there we go. All right, anything else on the city managers' report, folks? All right, well, let's see, Judge Blake, if we can, if we can pause this until seven, we'll come back at seven so that folks who might want to tune in for the swearing in would be able to do that at seven, if that works for you.
I'm certainly worth waiting for, so that's no problem.
You're absolutely worth waiting for, that is true. All right, all right, everybody, then we'll, we'll adjourn this business or this work session and we'll be back at seven o'clock for the work session. Just mute and stop the video, don't sign off. Thank you. All right, there it is, seven o'clock. So I'd like to call to order the city council business session for January fourth, 2021. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor McBride?
Here.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Cofield?
Present and accounted for.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Present.
Mayor Rogers?
Present.
Councillor Bacon?
Here.
Councillor Finley?
Here.
Mayor all present.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The pledge of allegiance, please. My flag. There it is. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right. All right, then Judge Blake, I believe this is your cue now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take the opportunity to, first of all, since I now have the stage, also invite anybody who ever has an opportunity to come to court without an invitation, because an invitation in court is a citation. So I'm telling you to come to court without an invitation and observe what we do, because that's the best way to get an understanding of how the court works. The second thing I'd like to fill in is that we were all start, all ready to go on the community court was, which was going to start in this month, but due to COVID and the problems, we're now having court remotely electronically at this point. So having community court has been put off for at least a month or two, but that's something that we were very close to getting going with the courtesy of Mr. Mayor, which I I'm really looking forward to it because I think that would really help. And I was listening earlier on to some of the dynamics that the city is dealing with. And I think that could answer some of those needs. So we're a little frustrated, but we're gearing up for that probably in the next month or two. With that, I would ask first, Councillor Bacon to come on screen and raise your right hand. I hear clicking.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm here. I can, I can see you.
Well, I can see you now. Thank you very much. And, and just, just for, before we get going, I'm very sad that we can't be in person because I've enjoyed doing this with Councilman Bacon for a number of years and I miss seeing you in person. So
I miss my hug, Judge. I miss my hug.
I was trying to get there, but I did. I Denise Bacon.
I Denise Bacon.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And ordinances of the city of Newburgh.
And the ordinance of the city of Newburgh.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a city council member.
Of a city council member.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
As always. And then Mike McBride?
Here.
All right. Are you on, if I can't really see you, but that's fine. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Mike McBride.
I Mike McBride.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
I will support the charter.
I will support the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Newburgh.
And ordinances of the city of Newburgh.
And I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a city council member.
Of a city council member.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And then lastly, Councilman Holloman?
Of course, my dogs are freaked out.
Well, of course they would. This is a big deal.
My, my husband just showed up and I'm like, oh my God, in the exact moment.
Can we confirm that your dad's on the line too?
Yeah, Dad, are you there?
Okay. All right. That's important. That's important. I Elise Yarnell Holloman.
I Elise Yarnell Holloman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
I will support the charter.
I will support the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Newburgh.
And the ordinances of the city of Newburgh.
And I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a city council member.
Of a city council member.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Your father is so proud.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much, Judge Blake. Thank you so much. And all of you, you know, thank you, whether this is your, you know, first time, fourth time, second time around. Thank you. I don't, you know, we all know how it is and just thank you for your willingness to serve, all of you. All right. Next on the docket, item 4B, election of council president. All right, before we get too further far into this, let me, and this is probably for people that are relatively new or somebody listening, I suppose at home, is under the council president's position is outlined in both the charter and in council rules. So if you can indulge me, I'll read what it says. Council rule, rule 6.2, council president. In the absence of the mayor, the council president will act as mayor and serve as the presiding officer. Pursuant to section 10 of city charter, at the first meeting each year, the council will elect a council president from its membership. Whenever in these rules, the mayor is mentioned and the mayor is absent, the council president can exercise the authority as the mayor. The council president presides in the absence of the mayor and acts as mayor when the mayor is unable to perform the mayor's duties. So that's how it is written. We have two here amongst us who have served as city as council presidents in the past, well, Stephanie and Denise. So they could probably tell you the real deal with it. They could tell you what it's really like. So anyway, the other thing is there, I want to say there was some chatter, a little bit of email traffic regarding the subject of council president. I don't think I've kept this hidden. I hope I haven't, but that I see that there's potentially, in my opinion, my opinion only, that there's some value to rotating this position. But again, that's, I have one vote and there's seven of us. So that's really, that's for what it's worth. So with that in mind, I did talk to councillor Yarnell Holloman yesterday. And she assured me that she would consider serving. I don't know if that has changed between yesterday and today. So, but with that introduction, I will leave it at that and we'll leave it to you all to nominate your next council hour. I shouldn't say your, our next council president. So there you are.
Oh, my child. Okay. So, yeah, no, no, I think it's no secret. I would at some point like to serve as council president. I was just, I did. And I have been a poor representative as a community, as a committee member recently due to COVID. But I was really honored that Rick thought that I was up for the task and I really, 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 it actually meant a lot to me that you, that you, that you called me and asked me. That being said, I would like to be up next to be council president if people would support it. And I would like to nominate Steph to continue out this year since she was only in it for about five months. And I feel like Stephanie's done really an incredible job and has a lot to bring to the council right now, to provide a consistent voice.
Hey.
So does my child. And I just, I think that she is the right person in 2021 to take us, take us through the year of uncertainty. And I know that her and Mayor Rogers have a, have a great working relationship.
Right. Well, very well said. Do we have a, I need to back up. Don't, this, please, one thing I want to make sure we, I didn't say this and I should have made this very clear. The idea to rotate had nothing to do with performance, right? So please.
I took that as a, thank you, my performance.
No, it was. I didn't mean it that way. Well, boy, forget it. I won't go any further. I'm getting, I'm burying myself further and further at this point. Forget it. Stop digging at this point.
I would like to second Stephanie. Unless you can get us out of this.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Denise. Thank you.
You need a lifeline. Wait, real quick, then I, I heard in firm Denise's second, Stephanie, do you want to be president? Yeah, I mean, that's a question. I think it's, you know, good for people that before just being voted into something. Seeing as how, you know, you've been in it for five months, what are your thoughts and experiences?
I'm happy to do it. I, I agree that I think, you know, it is a task that everybody should get to do when they serve on council, because I do think it's a lot of glory and a lot of pay and not a lot of work. So it's not. No, I, I'm happy to do it. You know, I am lucky enough to have the time to do it, but I certainly would, would support anyone else too in the, in the position.
What, what I would like to say, as I have been city, the president of the council six times. It is, it is an honor, but it is also a huge responsibility. We don't plan on anything happening to Rick, but you know, you really have to take into consideration if something does, you win. Temporarily, you know, so it's not just a, it's not just a titled position. It, there are serious obligations that could follow with it. So you, you should take it seriously. There's a lot to learn. I wouldn't ask anyone to do it on their first day. And, you know, it's always been my honor and I have always appreciated all the opportunities that it gave me and all the things I was able to do. But it is a large responsibility. It is more than just passing a title every year, although that's what it has. That's fortunately for us, what it's always worked out to be, just passing.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And that's very true. So, all right. Any further discussion? All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any hearing, no further discussion. Let's go with, why don't you raise your right hand? There we go. And Sue, we've got unanimous. All right. Thank you all. Thank you. And Stephanie, thank you for your willingness to serve. And Elise, thank you for your grace on this. So thank you very much. All right. I understand from Sue, we have no public comments tonight. So all of those who are waiting for a lengthier meeting, I'm sorry. Issue tracker, I'd imagine, does not look particularly different from the last time.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. So now on to the consent calendar. This is resolution 2020 3714. And just for the, for the record, and this for Sue more other than anybody else, I will abstain from this one. Just again, Todd Saunders, I met the Saunders company before and the relationship both with Habitat, their neighbors, I've known them for years. So I'll abstain from this. But anyone else, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
And Denise with a second? All right. All in favor signify by raising your right hands. All right. And that too is unanimous. All right. Amazingly enough, amazingly enough, we've reached the end of the agenda.
I didn't jinx it. I tried real hard.
You tried. You tried. But whoever's scoring at home, I've got seven 14. That one's, boy, that's a great way to start a new year. So anyway, everybody, unless anything else, anybody got anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, Mike's our lucky charm.
Yeah, Mike, that's it. Yep. Yep.
I did want to thank Elise for all the wonderful things she said about me that aren't all true. Well, I, I did bring the council here, I mean, the homeless shelter here and start it, but I had lots of help from lots of wonderful people. And all the churches helped me at the same time. So, but thank you for that.
But I will just say, I will just say, it, you know, when you say volunteerism, what Newburgh has taught me and what I have gained from Newburgh is true volunteerism. So, I mean, I had volunteered, you know, at the church when I was younger and such, and such, but this is a whole new level and it's from people like Denise and Rick and Mike that have been in the community for a long time that have blazed the trails of volunteering.
Mike, did you have a comment?
Yeah. So I, I mean, I just have a question. Is there anything that we can do as a city to help the businesses that are closed down? I don't know how, how much red tape there is for them to try and get the loans and then they've got to pay them back. But, I mean, do we have any type of funds that, that we could give some of these businesses that are closed? Because there's people that I know that have gone out of business and I'm really, I'm sad about that because, you know, thank the Lord, it doesn't apply to me. Maybe it doesn't apply to you guys, but it applies to some people. And for them, financial struggle is a huge burden to carry. That can be so stressful. And so is there anything else that we can do as a city? Do we have any funds that we could just give them? I mean, we're here to, to help everybody that's part of our community. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know. You guys would probably know more than I do.
Mike, we've had a couple of rounds, excuse me, of funding that we put out early in the what's been an extended, obviously, an extended response to COVID. The business relief grants and then, you know, a couple of months of the Support Local Challenge, which was folks paying local and, or bringing receipts from local spend and getting a credit for their utility bill and also donating a credit for if they were willing to do that. And I think both were successful. I think honestly, what we're running up against right now is bandwidth and the ability of our staff to be able to execute on some of this stuff, especially based on the transition we're having in finance department right now. It's just, it's our, it's maybe not as much finding the money, although certainly like, I don't think we're going to have a real flush budget, but you know, I think it's as much finding the capacity in our staff to be able to execute on some of the programs. And, you know, I think we talked about doing Support Local Challenge again, and honestly, just I feel like we've been gutted a little bit and trying to execute on, on something like that right now. So, you know, we'll continue to talk about, you know, if that's something we can do, just have the capacity, but it's, it's been labor intensive when we've done them previously and to have lost two folks in, you know, two key people in the finance department, I just, I honestly would struggle to make a commitment to do more there. And I respect what you're, exactly what you're saying. I agree with you. There are folks struggling and it's something that pains me to, to see that, you know, we or other levels of government frankly could step in and provide some assistance. And it's really, it's, it's a hard time all around, you know, and it's just not made any easier by not having hands to do the work.
Now, Mike, I, I agree with you as well. And I think, you know, and maybe this is something we can have a more in-depth conversation about, particularly ways that something could be done without really putting a lot of burden on finance and whether that's association with downtown coalition, with the Chamber of Commerce, whatever it may be as a way for them to maybe do a little bit of the legwork, if, if there happen to be some money around. I would be in huge support of that. And, you know, Mike, particularly a lot of the bars and restaurants particularly, not to, you know, select them particularly, but they've been hit really hard. So but anyway, maybe we can have a little more conversation about that.
Sure. Yeah.
People, and why don't we get a, I don't want to, again, we don't want to send people, I've sent Dan off on projects if, if y'all don't, I mean, should we, do you want to try to look at that? Thumbs up, somebody, I don't know, you know, however many, looks like we're getting nods. And so, Dan, I mean, if there is something, that would be great. And Mike, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Sure.
Anyone else, anything else? All right. All right. Well, again, thank you. Thank you to our new councillors and those who have re-upped. Thank you all. James, thank you for joining us this evening. Otherwise, everybody have a nice evening and go Browns.
Indeed. Thanks. Thank you.
Good night.